It's probably Dave Conlon's mooring, but uh, once they have the Harbor Master boat in the water tomorrow, I'm gonna go out and have another conversation with them and see where we go from there.
Thank you. We are anything we can do to support. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, it's, it's, it's kinda delicate because they are private, private moorings and uh, so it's uh, I, I'm sure the owners will tell, say at some point that they want them off of there and, and they're gonna bounce around and I won't be surprised by that. It's uh, it's an interesting challenge.
I, I get it. And Joe came out, Joe came out and got them off his mooring.
No, they moved themselves.
Oh, but yeah, I thought you came out and told them to move.
They knew he was coming.
Aha.
I was all set to send them some way cells.
And you know how, if I may say so, cause they're not listening. They are so incompetent. I don't think they know how to sail.
Um, I, I, I think that they're probably very new to the art of boating.
Yes. In fact, the third time they came in with a kayak, they didn't know how to kayak.
No, they don't. They don't, they don't know how to, they, they're, they're getting better at it. I'll give them credit.
The second time or third time they came in with a kayak, they got stuck on a rock.
Well, I don't know, I don't know whether it's an art or not. It's still a mystery to me.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give Dan more credit than he deserves maybe, but he sees a, he sees one of the, one of the better voters out there that I've seen. And I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with the term art there. I think it is.
You're, you are right.
Well, thank you very much for whatever you're doing. I understand it's a tricky situation.
It's, it's, it's delicate, but we're working.
Delicate. Nice word.
We're working on it.
It's delicate. Yes.
Now Pat's with us tonight. Hi, Pat.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Pat.
Hey, Gene. Hey.
Welcome.
Wel- welcome to the FinCon.
Did I stumble into the wrong meeting?
No, no, I think, I think it's Selectmen and uh,
Selectmen and FinCon tonight, yeah.
We're, we're gonna, we, our, our uh, activity, I believe is very brief. I'm here with our chair. Uh, and uh, as soon as we have a, a quorum, let's, let's get things rolling.
Yeah, because we gotta go to the Celtics. Oh Celtics.
Yes, Barbara.
I went to the game, I went to the game on Monday night.
Oh, so you were, you were responsible for it.
Oh no, I was there with Susan Solomon and we were there and it looked, they were 20 points ahead. Everything looked great. And then the last minute, oh my god.
That's coaching.
It's making no three pointers.
Yeah, but in the end there, he didn't coach that well. I didn't think.
It was heartbreaking.
Uh, yes.
I think we're uh, we're in the uh, the zone here, Gene, as far as the, you wanna open the meeting?
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh yes, that's right. I forgot. Where's Josh?
When you need him.
Well, welcome all to the um, today's date.
It's the seventh.
The, the uh, eighth?
The seventh. May seventh.
The seventh. On Wednesday the seventh. And we will, uh, do we have any opening remarks?
Well, before we do, before we do, let's uh, let the FinCon call ourselves to order here. So it is uh, six thirty-five. There is a quorum of the Finance Committee. So it is Dan Mcmackin, Bob Vander Slice, Barbara Beatty, Melanie Drayton, Deborah Warren, Tim Bell. And I think that's it. That's like the entire committee. Right now.
I didn't mean to go ahead of you, Bob, but it, in, in our agenda, it has you logging on later in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun. Either way, either way, we, we are in session and I'll turn the floor over to you, Gene.
We're ready to go.
Opening comments.
None here, Gene.
I'll just say uh, it's good to be uh, joining you tonight for my first Board of Selectmen's meeting and uh, thank you for um, thank the voters of Nahat for electing me a selectman and uh, happy to do my part to keep the town moving forward. So thank you.
Wonderful. So thanks, thanks for the effort you put into, to making this happen, Pat. Great job, you and the campaign workers. Outstanding.
They, they were definitely, everyone was, was great. Thank you.
Okay, before we get into the motions to reorganize, I'm gonna make a historical change here if I can. And that is, I am going to back off of the chairmanship opportunity. I tried this a couple of years ago. And I was told that it was tradition and it had to be. But I'm gonna ask Tony right now if that is the case.
Uh, it is tradition, but you do not, it is not, it does not have to be. Um, I think you're, you do, you do not, you are not forced to accept the chairmanship position if you uh, choose not to serve in that role. Uh, my, my recommendation would be that um, you, that Rob being the next most senior member of the board be nominated. Um, you could, you, you would stay in your current role as vice. And uh, Pat would uh, start as a, a typical tradition way, traditional way. Pat would start off as a recording secretary.
Yes, and, and that's the direction I, I think I'd like to go in. I've, I've given it a lot of thought and I've watched Robbie and, and that's pretty much the reason I'm doing it, is to develop some consistency in, in how we do this. In other words, have this being done for performance reasons and not because of the, the role you play in the traditional um, value of looking at this. And Robbie has shown himself to be more than capable um, to be a performance-related um, chair, chairperson. And over the last year, just watching him, the effort that he makes, the time he puts into it. And, and the, the, the reality of him being a a chairperson, a real chairperson, uh, hit me. So i- if, if you guys are amenable, uh, I would like to go in that direction and we can go from here.
Gene, I'm overwhelmed by your confidence and I, I can't thank you enough. Uh, I, it's uh, very humbling. Uh, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve. Uh, I had been looking forward to serving as your vice chair. Uh, but again, I, I do appreciate your thoughts on this and, and uh, I look forward to continuing on uh, and uh, working together closely to uh, making, making this board what it, what it, what it has been and, and will continue to be.
Well, you know, Robbie and I go way back to school committee days. And it, it was the same then. It was always a, 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 a stronger than necessary effort. And one which would take us a, a little bit beyond where we were intending to go. And I, it, it just, it just seemed right to me. It seemed right for the town. I think we, we, we're stepping up a little bit here and I'm not selling myself short, but I am suggesting that he would be a much better candidate for the job.
Uh, in terms of, I was definitely ready to support the tradition of Gene and, and uh, thank you for all that you've done for the board and, and um, and recognizing that. But uh, you know, defer to your judgment, Gene and, and Rob, I'm, you know, either you are both uh, perfectly capable of the job and uh, Gene, I defer to your judgment on that.
Thank you, Pat.
You wanna make a motion, Gene?
No.
Well, you could start by, you could start by, uh, you can start with a motion to nominate Pat as the recording secretary. All right. Uh, I, I nominate uh, Pat O'Reilly as Secretary of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Debate, discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Roll call vote. Rob Tibbo, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
And uh, Pat O'Reilly, aye. I don't know if you're supposed to mark for yourself, but uh,
Welcome aboard, Pat.
Thanks.
Now make the motion to nominate, to nominate Robbie Tibbo, chairperson.
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I will say that uh, it, it is, I'm again truly honored uh, by uh, this gesture and, and I will continue to do my very best for the, on behalf of the town in Nahat.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote.
Uh, Pat O'Reilly, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
It's all yours, Rob.
Well, we still gotta get a uh, vice chair in here, Gene.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
So Rob, Rob or Pat, if you guys can make that motion.
Yeah, uh, Gene, I, I nominate Gene Canty as the vice chair.
Uh, seconded.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye.
Gene Canty, aye.
There we have it.
Excuse my, excuse my horse voice. Please.
Sounds fine here.
Yeah, you, you, you sound fine, Gene. Yeah. You find, you sound fine.
Thank you.
So that brings us back to the agenda. We've got that. Secretary, opening comments. Resident parking stickers for 2025 are now available at nahat.org. Stickers purchased from March 1st through June 30th are fifteen dollars each. Stickers purchased July 1st through December 31st are twenty dollars each. All bills due to the town must be paid and a census completed before purchasing the sticker. Annual town meeting, Saturday, May 17th, 2025 at 12:30 PM at uh, Nahat Town Hall. Visit the town reading page at nahat.org for more information, including warrant article information. There are scholarships now available. Please visit the scholarship page at nahat.org for more information. Metal recycling pickup, metal, white goods, TV, computer recycling, last Saturday of each month until October 25th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM noon behind the DPW garage. Excuse me just for a second. Thank you. Curbside spring leaf pickup on Mondays, May 12th and May 19th and Tuesday, May 27th. Leaves must be in biodegradable bags and curbside by nine a, uh, 7:00 AM. No roots, root balls or branches, no open barrels. YMCA stride along the tide 5K road race Saturday, May 10th, 2025, beginning at 8:00 AM at Lowlands Park. Good Hope Running and Walking 5K Road Race Saturday, June 7th, 2025, beginning at 9:00 AM at Lowlands Park. You can find the registration and route map for the races on the community calendar at nahat.org. The Nahat, the races will both follow the same 5K route. Market by the Sea, Saturdays on June 21st, July 19th, August 16th and September 20th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Flash Road Park. For more information or to become a vendor, visit the market page of, at nahat.org or email ktailler@nahat.org. Town Hall internship. We are accepting resumes until May 30th for a paid, part-time town hall summer internship. View full, view, view the full job description and application at nahat.org. The Johnson School Educational Greenhouse Memorial Bricks are still available. The Johnson School is in the process of building an educational greenhouse and to help fund the ancillary costs of the project, the school is offering the chance for people to purchase an engraved brick that will be part of the walkway leading up to the structure. Bricks are $100 each and can be purchased at JohnsonSchool.org. Uh, so we have to uh, make our picks for the select uh, I mean, the Town Administrator Search Committee. Uh, and I'd like to start off that off uh, with the selectmen making their picks. Tony, is that correct? We're, we're on the right track here?
Yes, if you, if you want, I'll just kinda quick recap. Um, you know, once uh, once um, I provided a formal resignation uh, notice to the Board of Selectmen, they formally created uh, the, or started the process of creating the Town Administrator Search Committee. Uh, the Town Administrator Search Committee consists, per the Town Administrator Act, consists of four appointments made by the Town Moderator, three appointments made by the Board of Selectmen, one appointment made by the Personnel Committee, which the Town Administrator Act shifted that to the Town Administrator. And then the uh, other appointment made by uh, the Advisory and Finance Committee. We uh, put notice out to the public asking for folks to submit their um, interest in serving on the committee. I believe the, I forget what the due date was for that. Was it the 23rd? I believe, or um, but we received, uh, so for the nine seats, we received, I believe, 10 or 11 uh, letters of interest. Uh, the fi- the Town Moderator, the new Town Moderator, Peter Barber, uh, elected at the last election, uh, has made his four appointments from that list. Those are David Walsh, Robert Steinberg, Bob Fields and Robert Skip Frary. And then the remaining members, uh, remaining uh, remaining folks who submitted letters of interest timely are uh, Dan Mcmackin, Donna Lee Leonardo, Judith Murphy, Brendan Berenek Olmstead, Jennifer McCarthy, Josh Antrim, uh, Julie Tarmey. And so I think, yes, the, the next step of the process here would be for the Board of Selectmen to um, make a motion for their three appointments. Uh, then I can let you, then I can make an appointment and then we can ask the Finance Committee to make an appointment uh, as well from this list of remaining folks that are interested.
Rob and, Rob and Tony, may, may the Finance Committee go first? I think we will be brief, brief and efficient.
Well, we certainly got a shorter list. Uh, I have no problem with that. Please, please go ahead.
All right. So I'm just gonna ask, does anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I, I'll move that we appoint Dan Mcmackin.
Well, uh, to, to discuss that, Barbara, uh, we have um, a, a limited headcount, obviously, a lot of folks that are interested in this. Uh, I think Josh Antrim is going to be an excellent candidate, hopefully appointed by the selectmen. And uh, if there's empty slots at the end of selection, I would be eager to serve. But my thought process is we need a little bit of balance on this committee. And right now we have uh, four and likely fifth man, and we've seen interest from our alumna Julie Tarmey. Uh, so I, my, I would thank you for your faith in me, but uh, my, my view is that uh, Julie would be an excellent uh, and very high functioning candidate for this role. And I am eager and willing to serve to the extent that uh, we could get a reasonable uh, balance of women on this committee. And I, I know that Josh would be uh, an outstanding candidate as well. So thank you. Uh, so you
Well, then I'll, I'll withdraw that because, I mean, I agree with everything.
Thank you, Barbara. So at that point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate uh, our alumna Julie Tarmey uh, in the interest of she's an excellent candidate and we need a little bit of balance on this committee.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Barbara.
Um, motion that's made and seconded for Julie Tarmey, is there any discussion? Other than she would make an excellent uh, selection committee member?
And I appreciate um, Dan, what you said about balance. And I appreciate that we're gonna be changing the name of the, of the board. I mean, all of this is we should, this is good to be doing. Thank you. And thank you for saying it.
All right. So with no further discussion.
But also Julie would be excellent, not just as I'm not allowed to use the word of what I, I didn't mean not to use that word, I won't, but Julie would be excellent as a person and candidate and da-da-da.
She was always great to work with when she sat on our board.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. And we miss her. All right, roll call vote. Um, Dan.
Uh, aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Uh, who else do we have? Tim.
Aye.
Deborah.
Oh, aye.
And um, Melanie. Both of you have a screen. I believe that is it. So that's a unanimous vote in favor. Um, so we are nominating Julie Tarmey. And I think our work here is done, so at least for the funniest.
You're appointing Julie Tarmey, not a nominee, you're appointing her.
Sorry, we are appointing, sorry, yes, you're right. We are appointing Julie Tarmey.
So with that, I move that we adjourn the Finance Committee's meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Again, a roll call vote. Dan.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Melanie.
Aye.
Uh, Deborah.
Aye.
And Bob votes aye, unanimous vote in favor. The Finance Committee is adjourned. Thank you. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Excellent pick. Uh, Dan, don't, don't go anywhere.
Okay, I'm just getting fast.
Uh, so I move that Selectmen appoint the following individuals to the Town Administrator Search Committee. Uh, Donna Lee Leonardo, Josh Antrim and Dan Mcmackin. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Excellent choices.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none. Uh, roll call vote?
Gene Canty, aye.
Pat O'Reilly, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye. Very good.
And, and as uh, as the de facto uh, Personnel Committee, I am going to appoint Jennifer McCarthy. Uh, Jen served as a uh, member on the Search Committee when I uh, went through the process uh, seven, about seven years ago. Uh, has served in many different roles uh, as well as uh, uh, being our dog officer, being uh, on the Recreation Commission, uh, doing a number of, a number of uh, community benefited activities. So um, please, you know, to you, uh, use my appointment for Jen McCarthy. And for um, Judith Murphy and Brendan Olmstead, thank you very much for uh, submitting your letters of interest. I know we also, we received a number of uh, letters of interest after the deadline. Um, I don't have their names here, but uh, just for anybody that um, you know, reached out uh, timely or non-timely, uh, it's appreciated that you wanted to get involved in this process. And I just wanna thank you and sorry we don't have more seats to provide, but I appreciate you putting your letters of interest in for this process. So with those appointments, um, I will work with Dan and the appointed members to get a, you know, get their first meeting scheduled uh, as soon as possible so that we can meet with them and talk about what the next steps in the process are and put together a uh, a schedule.
Tony?
Yes.
Could you just, I know it was Rob Steinberg, Bob Fields, who were the other moderators? Just
Uh, was uh, Skip Frary, Dave Walsh.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, and I'll, I'll get, I'll draft appointment letters uh, for the Board of Selectmen appointments. I'll draft one for the Finance Committee too, if uh, Bob Vander Slice, if you don't mind just signing it for me. And then I'll put an appointment letter together for me to, for Jen McCarthy and get those over to you, Diane.
Right.
Get, have them all come in and get sworn in. And do their other conflict of interest training and glory check and all that stuff.
Tony, what, once again, what's the timeframe?
Well, we have to go through that with the Search Committee. So, you know, typical process is that the Search Committee will start uh, by, you know, organizing their committee, create, you know, voting a, a chair and a vice chair and a recording secretary. Uh, they'll start to put together a job posting, job description, uh, and then work on a schedule. Their, their would, their schedule will look like, when are we gonna post the uh, vacant position for? Uh, when are we gonna get the posting online, publish the posting? Uh, when are we gonna request that um, resumes and cover letters are due by? Um, then once, depending on how many applicants they have, they may filter through those and determine to give, you know, all or some of those applicants an interview. Um, then they will, basically their job is to narrow down that pool of candidates to typically it's, it's uh, two or three uh, that they will essentially submit to the Board of Selectmen, for the Board of Selectmen to conduct their interview process. The Search Committee's role is, is really to just narrow the pool of candidates down to uh, two or three candidates to put before the Board of Selectmen. So there's a lot of, we have to think about, we have to look at a calendar and kinda map out what that schedule's gonna look like.
Tony, do we know who, who among us has the job description that was prepared for your hiring?
We.
We'd like to get our hands on that.
Yes, we already have our hands on it. Uh, Dan's, Dan's taking the lead on making uh, updates to that. Um, so it's already in draft form.
Right.
So Dan Scrip will provide the uh, approved job description.
Yep.
Well, I'll provide a draft. You guys end up actually approving it and publishing it, but I'll, I'll, you know, I'll give you guys a head start and after that, it's really a
Terrific.
And I, and I'll be there, I'll, I'll be part of those meetings uh, as long as I'm still around and maybe even afterwards if, if uh, if it calls for it. You know, having gone through the process recently, I think I can provide, you know, some recent experience and suggestions to you uh, to consider uh, as far as process and, you know, what types of questions you might wanna ask during the interview process and what questions as, as the as the HR uh, for the town in a hot, there's a lot of, you know, HR related laws about what types of questions you cannot ask during an interview process or types of things you can't have in a job description. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to sit in those meetings and help guide, guide the committee uh, in that way.
To, to that point, Tony and maybe Dan, uh, uh, ti- time is, is running short. Our lead time to ex- get this executed and to have uh, have some capable candidates turn up is limited. Uh, we obviously don't wanna be uh, be forced. Are we, what is the process for ap- appointing an interim uh, TM to backfill you? Uh, should this duration run over long or the availability of the candidate we want uh, to be limited to, let's say, after Labor Day?
Uh, I believe the, the, the Selectmen appoint someone interim, if I'm correct, Tony, is that right?
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
So the Selectmen can just appoint an interim TM to, to fill this uh, this need, uh, should we be unable to get uh, a quality candidate uh, before them in the narrow amount of time we have?
That's right. That's what, when, before 20, we had Jerry Perry step in for just a little while. So we've done it before.
And I think that's, that's likely to occur. It's, it's hard for me to see uh, this entire process come to a conclusion before the end of June. Um, and it's important that, you know, you go through a a, a good process to find the right candidate and not rush it to just find the fastest candidate. So
Exactly.
Well, we'll see, once we, once we get a better idea of what that's Well, we'll see, once we, once we get a better idea of what that schedule's going to look like, uh, that'll help, uh. You know, guide the selectmen on, uh, you know, an interim town administrator process.
To put in perspective, um, before Tony was hired, the committee was formed March twenty first, two thousand eighteen. And they submitted their, uh, three suggestions on June twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, so that's, what, three months, something like that, four months?
And then I didn't start until August thirteenth.
You have to, I think there's also, once you come up with a job description, you have to advertise it for so long. Is that correct, is there?
I think we have, I think we have, uh, I don't think there's a minimum timeframe, but certainly we should operate with one. You know, we want to, we want to make sure that we give enough time for folks to, you know, put together, you know, they want to. Look at the opportunity in depth, put together their resume, their cover letter, get their ducks in a row, submit. Then there's going to be, you know, you got to give the committee enough time to review all those applications. Decide who you're going to come in for interviews, scheduling those interviews, you know, it's, 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 it's really. It is a, it is, you know, a process that. Requires time, it's not something that you, you, you really can rush, uh, just based on what it is, so.
Is there a town administrator equivalent of save the date? To say that we will be putting it out soon?
Uh, oh, I had to think about what you were, I had to think about what you were.
What that means is we know we're going to be, uh, seeking a candidate, so why not let people know that we will be seeking a candidate?
I think, uh. I think it's pretty well known, just by the fact that my announcement of leaving is, has been pretty public. Uh, I think you could do something like that, uh, but, you know, there is a cost to publicizing that type of stuff, so. I think, you know, as far as getting the job posting out. That should be able to be turned around fairly quickly. It's the process after that, you know, how much time do you want to give for people to submit? And then the process of interview and whatnot. So hopefully we can get the job posting. Up and out, uh, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
Isn't, isn't a lot of this outlined in, on Nahat.org, uh, at some, in some location? I can't remember if it's under, it would be in the Town Administrator Act page, or whether there's another page there that, that. I, I remember distinctly that, uh, it, it needs to be advertised at a local level, a state level, and a national level. Uh, is, and you know, how big the committee would be and, and, uh, that sort of thing. I know it's on, I know it's on Nahat.org, but I can't remember where it is.
The Town Administrator Act says, uh, says where we have to post it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and actually, to that point and to Diane's point, it may, it may have a, uh. A time requirement, a minimum time requirement in that.
No, there's not, section three doesn't give a minimum requirement, but it does, uh, indicate where we should advertise, but need time.
Okay.
Yeah. I just reference that for people who might, you know, if you want to get a, a better outline of it, there, it is, it is at Nahat.org. Yeah, I'm in section three of the Minister of Iraq.
Yeah.
And that's under charter and bylaws. On the town website.
We good?
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, new business, we have the town election results. Uh, Tony, do I read this, or?
Uh, Diane is here, our town, our town clerk, uh, new, newly re-elected town clerk. Uh, who can provide the update?
Tip-off time, seven oh two. So elections were held on April twenty second, um, we had over six hundred people. In person, which was a really good turnout for a rainy day that it was. We had two hundred and thirteen early voters and two overseas voters for a total of eight hundred and twenty-one voters. Which is the most we've had since I started in two thousand twenty. Um, by a pretty big amount, the, typically, we get about three hundred voters, uh, when there's. No contention on any of the, uh. Uh, uh, the positions, but, um, and the last time we had more than one person for a position, we got almost six hundred people, so eight hundred and twenty-one. Was a very good turnout, um, it was about twenty-nine percent of the total, uh, voter, registered, registered voters in the hunt. Um, I can read them real quick. Um, the winners, uh, the Board of Selectmen, the winner was Patrick O'Reilly with four hundred and forty-nine votes. Michael Manning was second with two hundred and ninety, David Wilson was, had seventy-seven votes. Moderator Peter Barber was six hundred and fifty-three. Town clerk Diane Dunphy, seven hundred and twenty-five. Assessor for three years was Ted Costigan, he goes from being an appointed, uh. Assessor to a full-time, three-year term, five hundred and eighty-three votes. Assessor with a two-year unexpired term, currently, we have a failure to elect. We're looking into some things, there may be someone put in that position after we double-check with the elections division. Public Library Trust was Ann Brolmer with six hundred and eleven, Constable Robert Scanlon with five hundred and thirty-nine. Three-year school committee was Beth Anderson for five seventy-one. School committee for the two-year unexpired, uh, term was Meredith Thibault was four hundred and sixty-seven. And Judith Murphy, two oh three, so the winner was Meredith. Five-year planning board was Sheila Hamilton. Uh, two-year unexpired term on the planning board, uh, was Michael Collinane was the winner with five oh five. And in second place was Scott Kirkland at one seventy-seven. Susan Edwards was re-elected to the Nahat Housing Authority, uh, with six hundred and three votes. And our ballot question to change the town charter. Uh, the treasure collector term from one year to three years, received a yes vote, um, of five hundred and thirty-five votes. And a no vote of a hundred and seventy-one votes. So those are all the, uh, winners and candidates. I really want to thank all the candidates that ran for their positions, as well as the winners of those positions, it's, um. It's a lot of work, and everyone followed all the rules on Election Day and during the election, so. Uh, a big shout out to all the candidates that ran. Um, I'd also like to thank the police officers that worked that Election Day, Gino Spelta and Joe Maldonas, they did a great job. Maintaining the, uh, unruly crowds that we had. And, uh, also, I, I don't usually talk about them, but the election workers put in a great deal of time that day. It's, it's like eight, eight or nine hours for them. Uh, Polly Anderson, Lisa Mogan O'Keefe, KK Sherber, Martha Koscheleke, Sherry April, and Julie Cadigan. Worked the polls that day, and last but not least, I want to give a special thanks to our town warden, Carol Nelson. She's been the town warden for, I think, over ten years, and my right arm here. She has done an amazing job of starting at six thirty in the morning and maintaining a. Tire, um, a fair and impartial election, making sure everyone follows the rules. And it's a tireless effort on her part to make sure all the ballots are counted and. She was there from six thirty in the morning till ten at night, so even though the polls are open seven to seven, it's a long day for Carol and I. But Carol runs the actual go, uh, goings-on every day on that, and she does an amazing job, and I'm, we're lucky to have her. I'm lucky to have her, so thank you, Carol. And that's it.
Let me just add one more comment, Diane, and congratulate you on being our largest vote getter for the, uh, for the election.
Thank you.
Very impressive, with seven hundred and twenty-five votes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next.
Rob, just, I, I, I just want to echo Diane's comments and thank. Uh, everyone that worked the polls, you know, Diane and Carol and the election workers really do. Uh, work a number of hours, not only on that day, but to the, the lead-up to it, there's, uh, you know, as, and Diane. While also, you know, doing that while also serving all of our other roles and responsibilities as town clerk. At the same time, um, and, you know, obviously preparing for town meeting, which is coming up next, so. I just wanted to echo that and, and, and commend them for all the work that they did.
Well said, Tony, thank you.
Thank you.
We all set?
Yep.
All right, we have a vote, uh, regarding a surplus DPW truck, do I hear a motion?
Pat, do you want to read the motion?
Sure, why don't I do that, my first motion, uh. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the DPW two thousand five Ford F three fifty diesel utility truck as surplus. And it be placed on municipal bid for auction per MGL chapter thirty B procurement law.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, just, uh, you know, twenty years, uh, twenty-year-old vehicle here. Uh, we definitely got, uh, more than its useful life out of it, um, so. You know, it shows, it shows that the, uh, the DPW, you know, takes good care of their fleet and tries to extend the life. As long as possible, especially, you know, those vehicles go faster than any typical vehicle would, with the amount of, uh, snow removal and salt. Um, operation that they conduct, so, um, just wanted to make that note.
Tony, you're going to stick with the black versus the yellow?
The green, yep, we're slowly converting it, uh, that, uh. That is the traditional color of the DPW vehicles. Uh, it was always an army green color, so yeah, we're, we're slowly converting as we purchase new vehicles, we're, we're, uh. Purchasing them in that, uh, green, that green color.
Okay.
More traditional from Nahat, goes back a ways. Uh. We, we still have a vote on this, right? We haven't voted?
Correct.
Yeah, roll call vote?
Jean Canty, I.
Pat O'Reilly, I.
Rob Tibbo, I. We have a vote to approve an event request, the magic show at Nahat Town Hall, do I hear a motion?
Go ahead, Pat.
All right, magic show I can do. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the magic show at Nahat Town Hall on Friday, June twenty-seventh. Twenty twenty-five, starting at ten thirty AM at the Nahat Town Hall.
Second.
Uh, for discussion, uh, this event is hosted by the library and will help kick off their summer reading program. The event is free and open to the public. Roll call vote?
Jean Canty, I.
Pat O'Reilly, I.
Rob Tibbo, I. Uh, we have vacancies on the planning board, uh, there are two currently, and letters of interest. Are, are requested and can be sent to ktailler@nahat.org by May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Ongoing business.
Uh, can I just, uh.
Yep.
I, I see Shannon is here, and I just wanted to just, uh, thank Shannon and Michelle Cipano for their, their service to the planning board. Uh, over these years.
Oh, very good, yeah.
Thank you, um, thank you, Pat, I, I appreciate that. Hello, gentlemen, uh, Shannon Bianchi, fourteen Harborview Road, uh, it's been my pleasure to serve on the planning board and. Open Space Committee before that, and I really have learned a lot. Um, it's been a, a great blessing, uh, for my family, uh, to serve Nahat, and. Like I said, I've learned a lot, and I just really appreciate the, uh, the experience, thank you so much.
Shannon, thank you so much for your service to the town.
Thank you, Shannon, um, and especially recently, uh. I mean, you have a lot of, you have a lot of different things that you've worked on, on the board, but especially as recently, uh. A big help with the ADU, with the drafting of the ADU bylaw, that'll be, uh, discussed at the upcoming town meeting. And Michelle as well, so, you know, has served, uh, in a number of different roles and, um, you know, for. I think it's important that we do, I thank you, Pat, for bringing it up, I think it's important that we recognize. And thank them, you know, for serving in an elected capacity, in a volunteer capacity. Uh, you know, a lot of this, a lot of this work doesn't get done without, uh, folks like that, you know, putting their time for the town, so. Uh, thank them both. And, and Pat, this process, you, you're probably familiar with it, with previous, um, vacancies on the planning board that you were a part of.
I had to fill Jean's shoes at one point, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, once we get letters of interest in. Uh, we'll, we'll do a joint meeting with the planning board and, and have a joint vote to appoint those two seats. And, and the, and the appointment, uh, will be from the day of the appointment until the Election Day. And then, uh, should, and then that seat will be up for election for the remaining. Uh, term length of the terms that Michelle and Shannon were serving.
Good information. Thank you, Tony. Uh, ongoing business, we have a vote to convert Colby Way into a one-way from Harris Street to Bass Point Road. Residents on this section of Colby Way will be allowed to enter the street from Bass Point Road. Uh, I see that a motion will be made on the floor, uh, with some help from Dan.
You're muted, Dan. Dan, you're muted.
For the button, there we go, okay, so. Um, so we're moving, just so I recap, we're moving to convert Colby Way into a one-way from Harris Street, which is the, the top of the hill. Down to Bass Point, which is the bottom of the hill, of course, Colby is a hill, um, and. And we are going to allow the residents from entering for the bottom of Colby Way back up, but only residents, so it's one-way for everyone but the residents. Is that, is that right?
Right, that section of the street.
Okay, so the Board of Selectmen will move to convert Colby Way into a one-way street from Harris Street, which is the top of Colby Way. To Bass Point, which is the bottom of Colby Way, except for a residence-only, uh, privilege for the residents to enter Colby Way from Bass Point Road. So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, we've, we've, we've spent some time on this, uh, we had a, we had a meeting about it, um, a few, maybe about a month ago now. Uh, we have, uh, we had a, a petition submitted to the town, uh, we did a traffic count study. We looked at this area, um, and got a lot of feedback from the residents. This, one of their biggest, they, they're supportive of this change, however, some residents, especially one. Um, is required to drive up in order to park parallel to their, to their house and be able to exit the vehicle. On the street side, so, um, spoke with, uh, Police Department Chief, um. Furlong spoke with Chief Antrim at the Fire Department, spoke with Zach at, uh, DPW Superintendent, so, um. Happy to, happy to get this done, and, and, um, hopefully it helps alleviate some of the issues that we're dealing with there. With, uh, especially the larger vehicles that are, you know, tend to. Either get stuck or create damage on Bass Point Road as they're entering Colby Way.
It's my. Go ahead, Jean.
Which is Harris.
Pat, do you want to?
Pat, you can help us with that.
That's my street, um, so that intersects with, uh, Colby Way about midway up at the top of the hill, so. Yeah.
Right by Sheila's, right by Sheila's house.
Right.
Our town census says that Pat O'Reilly and his family is the only one that lives on Harris Street.
Number one.
Very exclusive.
Yes.
Yes. My understanding is that, that, that this is, uh, uh, at least influenced by, uh, people using, uh, GPS. Guidance to find their way out of Bass Point, and for whatever reason, it sends them up that street with. Big, big trucks, small cars, uh, it doesn't seem to make much difference, uh, and, uh. Uh, so I'm glad we're able to at least try this approach to minimize some of that traffic.
Is, is there a first responder plan for that area?
In relation to this change, you mean, or?
Did you, well, before and after?
It, it, it doesn't have any effect on how our emergency personnel can travel the road?
Okay.
Uh, so it shouldn't have any, any impact on that.
Yeah, the, the only feedback I got, um, myself was that it was important to keep, um. The point from where it intersects Harris Street, uh, and goes to, um, out to Castle Road. A- as, as two-way, because that's, that's a main way in and out for a lot of people, especially the winter, that's the only, uh, non-step road. In and out of the neighborhood, so. uh, non-step road in and out of the neighborhood. So uh, that, as long as we're uh keeping that as two-way, even though uh we really have to stop at either end and let the other person go, it's, it's, it's only one lane. Um, but uh, you know, as a practical matter in the winter, it really uh helps access. But we, that would be kept uh two-way, and then just the 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 steep part of Colby Way would um be do not enter it from the bottom.
And Pat had some uh prior experience in getting software programs like Google Maps to change. Uh, so we're gonna, I'm gonna lean on you, Pat, to help us with, once we take this vote to uh, see if we can get them to update their algorithm and and help direct people.
It it may take a while, but we'll, we'll try to nudge them in the right direction.
Hey, that's discussion. I don't, I don't think we took the vote yet.
Nope, yeah. Uh, roll call vote?
Jean Catty, I.
Pat O'Reilly, I.
And Rob Tibboi. Town administrators report.
Uh, okay, so I'm happy to report that uh as of today, uh, all lots, uh, all ten lots that were at under agreement have now been sold. So out of the eleven lots that we put up for sale, ten of them have been sold, which uh brings in a total amount of revenue of five, about a little bit over five point one million dollars. Uh, so we are in, we've already paid off the initial loan of one point eight six million. We have enough funds to pay off the secondary loan for the preparation of the property at one point three million. And then we will um, we will have a balance uh balance of um, so that total loan amount is about three point one six million. So if you take the five point one million in revenue, subtract the three point one six million, we're looking at just under two million dollars in revenue in addition after paying off that, those loans. And then remember, we have two more properties uh that have yet to be uh, sold. So uh, you know, we, if those sell around the same average price, we could be looking anywhere between two and a half to three million dollars in total. Uh, you know, profit, so to speak, from, from the uh, from the process. Uh, we had a um, the Public Safety Building Designer Selection Study Committee uh has met twice now. Uh, they're working on putting together a RFQ to do a designer selection. Uh, we had a open space committee meeting oh, last, last night um about the Flash Road Recreation Master Plan. Uh, we'll be posting that uh the documents and the recording of that meeting on our website tomorrow uh, and and asking for additional feedback from the public. Um, real estate bills were due last Thursday. Uh, late bills are gonna go out the last week of May, so if you haven't paid your real estate bills, please come to town hall and settle up uh before you receive a late bill. Water, sewer, trash, the third, the third uh payment cycle for water sewer trash will go out this week, meaning they will be due likely uh June seventh, eighth, or ninth. Um, we have uh, from the Fire Department, um, they're going through the process of seeking additional call firefighter candidates. It sounds like Austin has been able to recruit a five to eight applicant, applicant, so hopefully we get a handful of folks um that we can send off to the Call Fire commit, uh, fire
Academy.
Academy. That starts with an A, not as Fire Academy. Um, and then I also just wanted to mention that uh, uh, the library had an open house on Saturday uh celebrating their one hundred and thirtieth uh anniversary. They had over a hundred people there, so thanks to all the folks that attended the library's open house. And as far as DPW goes, um Emerald Road paving is in its design phase. We're working with Stan Tech on some of the uh handicap ramps at the crosswalks and the design in those. Uh, hopefully we get that out for procurement and paving will happen in the fall, I mean, in the summer or fall. Uh, Ward Road Pump Station, the fence has been installed and paving is scheduled to uh occur tomorrow starting tomorrow morning. So that project is uh as expected, we, we figured we'd gain control, regain control of the pump station by the end of this month. So it's on, it's on track. Um, and that's my report.
Very good. Uh, that brings us to citizens' comments. You have uh anything you'd like to share? Please, please uh raise your hand and you'll have the opportunity to speak. Okay. I think we're ready.
Okay, um. So Pat, do you wanna read the motion for executive session? And then Rob, once he's done, if you can read that last sentence declaring?
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to uh, general laws, chapter thirty-eight, uh, twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation Northeastern University Marine Science Center, uh, four hundred and thirty Nahat Road, Nahat, and to discuss pending litigation strategy regarding the town of Nahat versus uh one Coast Guard housing tenants. Uh, if the chair declares that an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and pursuant to general law, uh, jail, that chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of and any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements specifically to review nondisclosed executive session minutes pursuant to uh, general law, chapter thirty-eight, twenty-two F and G. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
And I chair, I, I, the chair do declare an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating body, and we will not return to open meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Jean Catty, I.
Pat O'Reilly, I.
And Rob Tibboi. Thank you, everyone.
So Tony, Cole Farrenkoff is part of our, our team for the lessy matter.
Okay.
Nice job, Pat.
Uh, thank you.